I'd like to welcome everybody and call to order tonight's Board of Education meeting, February 27, 2024. Standing as you are able, could you recite the Pledge of Allegiance as led by Treasurer Gerby?
Okay. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Chérie Mademoiselle, it is with deepest pride and greatest pleasure that we welcome you tonight. And now, we invite you to relax. Let us pull up a chair as the dining room proudly presents your dinner. Be our guest, be our guest. Put our service to the test. Tie a napkin around your neck, chérie, and we'll provide the rest. Soup des shores, hot hors d'oeuvres, why we only live to serve. Try the great stuff, it's delicious. Don't believe me? Ask the dishes. They can sing, they can dance. After all, miss, this is France. And dinner here is never second best. Go on, unfold your menu, take a glance, and then you'll be our guest. We are guests, be our guest. Bifragu, chisouflé, pie and pudding en frombe. We'll prepare and serve with flair and culinary cabaret. You're alone and you're scared, but the banquet's been prepared. No one's gloomy or complaining, while the flatware's entertaining. We tell jokes, I do tricks with my fellow candlesticks. And it's all in perfect taste that you can bet. Come on and lift your glass, you've won your own free pass to be our guest. We are guests, be our guests.
Well, and thank you, thank you very much, the SHS Drama Club, under the direction of Mrs. Glatz. We're really looking forward to the three upcoming performances of Beauty and the Beast. It will take place on the weekend of March 15 through the 17th, all taking place at the Allen Ewing Performing Arts Center. But it's a cashless event, so ticket purchases will be online only and can be made in advance. There's a link to purchase tickets coming out soon. And they can also be purchased online at the door on the day of the performance. I'm going Friday night, so I'm really looking forward to it. Thanks for, thanks for entertaining us tonight.
But I'm going Friday night, too.
Oh, you're going Friday night, too. Great.
Thank, thank you so much. I've been hoping to be able to do something like this for the past year and a half. Thank you. We have, Superintendent has, would like to recognize a few special people in this district.
Okay, so our first recognition tonight is the Celine volleyball program. And many, if not all, are at club volleyball tonight. So, we went over earlier today and had a picture taken with myself, Athletic Director Matha, and many of the girls that make up the team. And so I'd like to acknowledge the Celine varsity volleyball teams from the past two seasons. We'll backtrack to 2022, as it was the best season Celine varsity volleyball has had in 38 years. The 2022 season was coached by Darian Bandell and Jamison Cruz. And the season brought many championships and honors, including first place in the SEC Red, district champions, regional champions, Elite Eight champs, and they made it all the way to the Final Four in Battle Creek. One senior, Lainey Burns, continues to play volleyball in college at Edinburgh University. Now on to this past season, the 2023 season was also coached by Darian and Jamison. And the team was led by five seniors, along with six juniors and five sophomores, and they saw tremendous improvement throughout the season. They took second place in the SEC Red, they were district champions, and made it to the Sweet 16 in the regional finals. Six players earned all-conference honors, including First Team Olivia Bean, Mallory Bowle, Catherine Flaherty, Marie Lorio, and Honorable Mention Kate Fredericks and Ally Smith. Two players earned All-Region and All-State honors, Marie Lorio, Second Team All-State, and Olivia Bean, All-State Honorable Mention. Three seniors have committed to play volleyball and further their education in college, including Olivia Bean at Grand Valley, Mallory Bowle at Notre Dame, Catherine Flaherty at Xavier, and junior Marie Lorio is going to Syracuse, but she still has one more year to play as a Celine Hornet. And the varsity team wants to also recognize the freshmen and JV teams as their support and cheering were vital to their success. Thank you to all the younger players, as well as freshman coach Stephanie Devie and JV coach Ellen Stoles. The future of Celine volleyball is bright, stingum. And now on to our next superintendent recognition, and that includes the SHS Today and Hornet Nation, our, our teachers involved in that program, and the students. Wonderful program. So we'll start with reading a little bit about their accomplishments. The Video News Production Program, taught by Mr. Nathan Bush, creates weekly news shows, SHS Today and Hornet Nation for Celine High School and the local community. SHS Today, a magazine-style news show, is in its 15th year and features stories about interesting happenings around Celine High School. Hornet Nation is celebrating its 10th season, as it showcases the best of Hornets athletic programs. This year, the teams have produced a combined 18 shows for the season. The year started with Second Year students helping to lead First Year students towards being knowledgeable on the production process and technology required to pull off the various aspects of news production. By mid-November, the first shows debuted during Wednesday's Hornet time and have continued since. In addition to the weekly show production schedule, both teams have been producing the advertising videos for the 22 different SWWC programs that will be showcased throughout Washtenaw County over the course of the next year and a half. These videos provide every student a real-world opportunity to work with a client, AKA the program teacher, to create a high-quality promotional video that showcases each unique program offered through the SWWC. But probably the most fun was had on two Video News Production field trips to Detroit this year. In November, students had a chance to go to Ford Field and experience the Michigan Association of Broadcasting Great Lakes Broadcast and Sports Media Academy. They met industry professionals in breakout sessions and learned from keynote speaker, Detroit Tiger broadcaster Craig Monroe. And just earlier this month, the team headed back to Detroit to visit the awesome Media House at Rock Financial and had a behind-the-scenes tour of WDIV Studios with news anchor and reporter Nick Monicelli. They even made it on a live news broadcast at noon. As you can tell, it's been a great season so far. So we'd like to have Hornet Nation and SHS Today, everybody come up to the microphone. We'll go one at a time, and you state your role, what year you are in school, and then tell us what your, yeah, what you do for either SHS Today or Hornet Nation. And let's start with our, our Mr. Nathan Bush. Let's begin with that, and then everybody come up, and then we're going to take a picture over on the side. And, oh, you have to toggle the microphone on by clicking the push button to make a green.
All right. Thank you very much. And Ben, I just sent you a text, if you want to showcase that. My name is Nathan Bush, and thank you very much for the honor. These are some of the student representatives, come on up, that are part of the Video News Production Program here for us this year. And I'm having like a full circle moment, as my son is also Lumiere, so I wanted to point that out, which is fun for me. So, thank you for tying this all together. This is great. So, anyway, come on up.
So, I'm Brady Noctreeb. I'm a senior producer for Hornet Nation this year. This is my second year doing the program, and this year has been such a wonderful opportunity to get to really leave a legacy for these, like, First Year students and people who are really interested in the industry. The trips we've been on, these experiences that we've actually got to be like hands-on in the industry have been really impactful, and I'm really excited to go maybe do something with that in the future. I'm going into like a graphic design kind of field, but a lot of video does come from that and like is needed in the industry. So, there is always video needed everywhere. So, it's been just an honor.
My name is Nick Roman. I'm a junior and a Second Year student in the program. I, I'm going to be a Third Year next year, and so I'm just excited to continue the work that we do and, and, you know, pursue, pursue a future in the field, so.
Hi, I'm Faith Pearson. I'm a Second Year, and I'm the producer, I'm one of the producers of SHS Today. Along with what Brady said, I've learned so much in this class from last year and this year. This year being in a more leadership position, so I get to teach people as I go. And it truly is just a great class, led by an incredible teacher. And, yeah, it's, I have had so much fun, and all the opportunities that I've been given in are amazing.
Hello, my name is Ev Belote. I have been in SHS Today. This is my first year. I'm a junior, and I can't wait to come back next year and have more fun.
All right.
All right, let's get, let's get first, let's, you need one air?
Sure, yeah.
Everybody come over here to the monitor, and people gather around.
Take our jobs eventually, Rhonda.
I know, I think a couple of them are ready to take our seats. Thanks for joining
I love SHS Today. When it, every time it comes on, I get the little email from Nate Bush. I'm, I, I just drop everything and I say, all right, let's see, what do they got going on this time? And it's-
Tomorrow morning?
It's must-watch TV.
Must-watch TV. We are at the public comment section. A member of the public can address the, the board briefly for up to three minutes, or request to be scheduled on the agenda of a future meeting. Please note that students will be given priority to speak on any topic. The first public participation portion of the meeting will be limited to one half hour, 30 minutes normally, and limited to agenda items only. A second public participation portion will be offered at the end to allow for any other comment. Individuals addressing the board should take into consideration the rules of common courtesy. Public participation portion of the meeting cannot be used to make personal attacks against a board member, district employee, or student. We have one stakeholder wishes to speak this evening. And we got a new person on the timer, you know, give them a few seconds to get-
Oh, now it is. I am Cory Belote, and I am speaking to you tonight on behalf of the Celine lacrosse program. I am the Board President of the High School Boys Lacrosse Club, and wanted to let you know that sign-up is open for 3rd through 8th grade through Community Ed. The 3rd through 8th grade Parent Guardian Meeting is March 13 at 5:30 PM in the Liberty School cafeteria. High school registration is open. It's under self-funded sports, lacrosse, where you'll find both boys and girls lacrosse. Boys lacrosse starts Tuesday, March 12, from 6 to 8 at, 6 to 8 at Hornet Stadium. We'll be holding practice and tryouts same time. The High School Parent Guardian Meeting is Tuesday, March 19 at 7:00 PM in the High School Commons. We are a self-funded sport. That means that we are fully funded by our player fees and fundraising, and we do hope to become a school-funded sport someday. Our player fee is $400. We offer financial need-based scholarships, and it's a wonderful sport. By far, it's my favorite sport to watch. My oldest started playing in 5th grade, and he is in his second year at Hope College, playing lacrosse there. My youngest started in 3rd grade, and he will be playing goalie as a junior. So if you're looking to try out the game, check us out. Again, 3rd through 8th grade, register through Community Ed. High school, join us on March 12 at 6:00 PM. And if you've never played before, come check us out. We do have equipment for loan. We're happy to teach you, introduce you to the wonderful sport. And lastly, I do want to give a shout-out to the Beauty and the Beast cast. I have a kid in the cast, as well as, they were also in, are also in Hornet Nation, so thank you.
Thank you so much. I have no response to previous public comment. At this point, it's the revisions or approval of the agenda, and I know that there are a couple of issues going up. I'll, I'll start with mine. I'd like to remove Item 7. The student showcase is canceled this evening. And are there any other changes to the agenda that we need to take into account?
Maybe, I mean, it's not a big one, but I, I know that Ginny's not here, and for the policy update.
Oh, she, she left me a lot of notes. I'm prepared to make a policy.
Okay, yeah, she, it just had her name there, so I just wanted to-
Oh, okay. Well, if you, if you think it would be better with my name there-
That's fine.
I'll be her designee.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Yeah. Oh, I thought you wanted to table that one item. Oh, yeah, are we moving to that?
No, we're, we're tabling or changing, we're adjusting the agenda at this point.
Okay.
Your mic needs to be on.
So, I was hoping to move the bench discussion to a later date and possibly form an ad hoc committee? Is that what we decided, or take it to the Wellness Committee?
Super, thank you. So, we'll remove, we'll table this recommended motion 8A regarding the benches. And there was some discussion about whether it should go to Wellness Committee if they're meeting soon, or set up an ad hoc committee. And we've had a little discussion about that just between the two of us, and we'll probably set up a quick committee. It'll have to move quickly because this is sort of a time-sensitive issue, so, thank you. All right, so that won't be on the agenda this evening.
We about to vote on that?
Pardon? Well, we are about to, I'd like to entertain a motion to approve the agenda as revised. Second, Austin. Do we, don't think there's any other discussion? If you're ready, then, all in favor, please say aye.
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 Aye? Opposed? All right, 6-0. Thank you, 6-0. Sorry. Action, oh, action items. So we're moving straight to Item 8B. You're on, and it's Second Assistant Superintendent Owesley. I, I'd like to entertain a motion to adopt the proposed 2023-24 General Fund Budget Amendment as submitted by Assistant Superintendent Owesley.
Gerby.
Gerby. Second? Second, Austin. All right, thank you. So, Miranda Owesley, the floor is yours, the podium is yours.
Thank you. Up on the slide was the, the budget summary that was in your packet. This rolls all the way back, if you see, to the far-left columns, the 2017, 18, to kind of give those historical balances as we roll forward. The peach-colored columns are the original budget that we passed, if you remember back, that is in June, so it's largely, there's a lot of unknowns, since the state budget does their budget from October to September, so there's a lot of unknowns how those things, we sometimes get them in legislative things, but not necessarily how they're going to roll out line by line for Celine. This is a February amendment, and then I continue to have the February 2024 estimates, but if you see in green, that's for the 24-25 year, and then from the 25-26 year in yellow. And those are basically those roll-forward kind of budgets, as everything remains the same. We've been to you, you know, Steve has talked about many different things that he is intending to do with the district, but at this point in time, those are still projections that we're looking at working towards. So these are what we have in reality. So, the estimates in the green and yellow column do not represent any attrition yet of any teachers or things that aren't going to be returning back from the replacements and retirements. Until I have a schedule to where I can sustain that kind of thing, I use, I'm still using roll-forward kind of numbers in that staffing model. So, in general, a lot of the things that change throughout these budgets is on realities. We know a lot more about staffing, we know retirement rates, we know we're getting in that state aid. So you'll see a lot of reductions. One of the greatest things I really want to point out, though, is part of our ORS, our retirement system, we get money through the district, and it comes in as a revenue, and then it leaves right as an expenditure. So it's a net zero to our bottom line. However, we have to spread it across all of our salaries. Last year, the state legislative put an extra pot of money, it was about $3.6 million, that they handed to, handed to Celine. We turned around and paid it back. That is a big reduction, so it looks like it significantly dropped, but it would be in the, you would see that drop in the state sources, and then also in the basic programs. In general, at the time in June, I didn't know if that would continue, so I just rolled over what we had last year. And then at this point in time, unless the legislative makes action in the middle of the year, is not likely that that payment will be there, so I took it out of the budget. So it's a pretty big swing in that $3 million range for those line items, as well as you'll see late, local sources. Increase, you'll see an offset in the state sources. In general, the pot and how it were funded in the local taxes and the state chips and the rest and that whole, as we do that bar in the original budget timeline, as our taxes go up, it doesn't mean we actually get more revenue. It means that state sources will come down because they don't have to chip in as much, because they still dictate how much we get. Some other things to note, that was one of the very big changes. There's lots of little changes. I mean, we have 1,500 different lines that I update along the way, and then the biggest change was to that benefits category with the ORS pieces along there. So in general, as we, those become reality for, if we talk about different staffing models for fall, and when we come back to the, the board in June for, for the original budget for 24-25, those would be at that time when we have those more reality of where those attrition could happen, and then that model. As we make it our goal always to make sure that our revenues and our expenditures are matching, and they, this off-balance, we obviously swung in the, if you look down to the bottom, we originally set our, our revenues were going to be less than our expenditures at that 1.6 number, and now we project that we are about $700,000 off from balance. There still is a lot of one-time revenue kind of things that are coming in, that we still want to make sure that, as those fall off, that we are continually looking to right-size the district to make sure that we are not going, we land softly.
Are there any questions for Miranda Owesley? We have one from Jennifer Stiven.
Yeah, Miranda, can you just talk a little bit about, and it's possible you just talked about this at the Finance Committee meeting, but the, the change in fund balance from the 2024-25 estimate to 25-26, that, so going 20.2 to 7.4?
Which one? Say it again, sorry.
Uh, the fund balance, the, the projection on fund, fund balance.
In which two columns?
Uh, the last two, the green and the yellow.
Okay, so-
I should have led with the colors.
It's okay. In general, the, what do you mean on what that change was?
Um, no, kind of just a little bit more storytelling about the reduction in fund balance down to 7.4, just how, how that got there, because that, that kind of stands out. If, if I was a community member reading that, like, what does that mean, if you can-
In general, so the, the years, there was a lot of one-time funding that came through. If you look through the 2020 through 2023, there's a lot of one-time funding things that came through, and there's a lot, a lot of things we put into place and also reduced back down. But fund balance itself is, is a, is a one-time, you know, it's revenues over expenditures in that year, and then in general, you know, you carry that forward, you basically have your fund balance, you add revenue to it, and then you subtract what you spend out, and that's what's left. In general, you know, you might say that that's a, you know, a lot of money that's sitting there, but when you equate it out to the number of weeks that the district could survive on that, that number, it ends up being a little bit more realistic of, of where you need to operate in just in the everyday, going back and forth. But in general, we got to this, historically, when we were at 5% fund balance, if we roll all the way back to 17, 18, 19, that was about two weeks of expenditures that the district had on hand as we moved forward. And so, those kinds of conversations and how we do our job in the finance office become very difficult for cash flow purposes when you only have two weeks of cash on hand to, to meet your needs. So, those kinds of things are really dire situations, where you don't have a lot of timing as things change. And from the state, it does not give us a lot of timing to make adjustments and move forward or unexpected things that we see.
If I could add, too, just the, it demonstrates the importance of sticking with that goal of reducing $1 million from the general fund each year for the next three years, because the quicker you get at that, it slows that down, so that that 25-26 isn't going to drop to 7.4%. So, that, that's, it's demonstrating the importance of doing the reductions that we're proposing and have been discussing with our staff for the last several months. So, anyway.
Yeah, I'll piggyback on that and say that, like, that's the reason. Like, if you look at our February amended versus the prediction for 24-25 green, the thing that, there's a couple of things, obviously. Miranda and I have exchanged emails about the ORS thing, because that definitely jumped out at me, about the $3.5 million swing between basic program original versus, but then the ORS thing, and that, that's an all, kind of an interesting thing. But when I look at our budget, I see almost $1 million in one-time funds, if you add together state versus federal. And so, I do think because of our right-sizing of the district and what have you, like, our goal to do that, and our goal through Finance Committee and through, are still, from my perspective, as the Finance Chair, you know, the right way to go. And I guess that's even makes me feel more confidently about that, when I look at our numbers and look at, then, you know, we end up being, you know, net, you know, like, I, I agree with you. I don't want to drop from 26% to 7.4. That's a drastic change. And I, I really don't think we'll realize that. I think that's, I think that's conservative budgeting, which is what we've always done, and some of those kinds of things. So, anyway.
It's just important that we, yeah, we're budgeting conservatively, but if we were to not make any moves, that could be reality. So, we're just going to demonstrate confidence in the plan moving forward of that three-year plan to just reduce down, so that more or less the fund balance stabilizes and, and won't see that kind of a dramatic drop.
I want to be clear, I have confidence in that plan, so.
And that kind of rolls back to enrollment, and how enrollment does fund a lot of our general funds. So in general, I already estimated approximately 87 kids dropping for this. So the original budget already had those state sources kind of reduced. We did see a reduction of, you know, more like 100 students, but there's also some one-time-ish things that came to, we got some extra little money for transportation for this, that, and the other. So it wasn't a huge difference, and there was an enrollment stabilization, little pot of money. And those things are come into state aid and then also drop back off in years. So, I continue, in the other years forward, do not include very one-timey sort of things that the state does, and our ongoing grants that are repetitive, I keep those in. And so, it's more of a, they're a bonus when we have them, but we're not planning on having them in case that it doesn't keep going. And that's, that's what the estimates in February, they're the 24-25 and the 25-26, also estimates I've kept in there. I think one's 110 student loss, and then another one, because it's a concept of a straight roll-up. If our continuing, our low kindergarten class continues, and the next kindergarten class is exactly the same. So it's those kinds of roll-up projections used in these numbers.
Can I also ask a clarification? I, I know, Steve, you talked about the recommendations coming to the board table in May. Is that still the plan? And if so, do you know which meeting?
You're referring to Strategic Council recommendations. Yeah, we're, we're still going to work towards a May, one of the May meetings. Yet, those conversations are not really addressing the budget per se. They're more about programming changes. They potentially have impacts on the budget, but they would be down the road. So I think more of the specifics as it relates to the budget. Those conversations are happening now. We're addressing that now. Strategic Council is geared more on, you know, different programs at the high school level, or we've talked about early childhood and early childhood center. Even if we were to move towards something like that, that wouldn't see, we wouldn't see dividends till down the road of revenue enhancement, if that's what you're kind of wondering about.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
I just want to kind of comment what Miranda said and just reiterate, you know, the, all the little nuances of the financing and I appreciate everything you do, Miranda, because it's, it's a lot, it's a thick book of all your little things. But the idea of the ORS and some years they're giving the extra 147C, all the different 147s, really kind of gives a misconception of what the bottom line of this district really is. And because it does come in and go right out. So when somebody says, oh, it's a 68 one year and then it's 78 the next year, well, we did get a lot of one-time funds, but they're pumping money into ORS too, so.
Yep.
Thank you. I'd like to put this to a vote then now. If anyone has anything else to say, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Hearing none?
Um, can I just ask a point of order clarification? Who was, who recommended the motion and who seconded?
Brad Gerby made the motion, supported by Tim.
Um, I thought that that was revisions of the agenda. No, they, you did the second? You did them both. Okay, okay, thanks.
Thank you. I'd like to entertain a motion, please, to accept the bargaining teams for the SEA 2024 collective bargaining negotiations as recommended and submitted by Carol DeGlio, interim Assistant Superintendent of Human Resources. And that team, I'll just say their names, consists of Carol DeGlio, Miranda Owsley, Cara Davis, Rex Clary, Emily Sikler, and Principal Teresa Steger.
So moves, Stubben.
Thank you.
Support gold.
Support gold. I just have one quick thing to say. This is new to us. We haven't usually listed the members of the team before, from my experience, and it may be a best practice going forward. Apparently, other districts do this regularly. So is there any discussion or any questions? And Carol DeGlio is right over there, ready to answer all of our questions.
Yeah, I have a question.
Go ahead.
Like you said, we typically don't have, I guess, that specific information with the team. I know we've worked kind of with individual people. So I guess this number of people, I guess, I, if, okay.
Is the question that, is this a usual number of people for a team?
Yes, because there's many, we have six people here and so I was kind of surprised by that and just wanted more information.
How's that? It is pretty typical. One thing that I want to be mindful is I don't have institutional knowledge. So while I have practice and experience in doing the negotiations on many levels, I wanted to make sure that there was members on the SAS district team that can help in discussions that require some institutional knowledge when you're doing negotiations. I also look at it as a great team building for both the SEA or whatever team we're negotiating with, with the district, so there is collaboration and there's a lot of opportunity for people to get to know each other on a deeper level and have discussions that are around the practices that we're all living into. And it also helps to extend learning into the building levels, to have principals, a secondary and elementary principal on board that can help with bringing information back to their teams at the elementary and secondary level and again, to provide some of that institutional knowledge.
Great. I think, I think that's great to have multiple people out there getting that feedback. And I like process and completely, this is transparency and I love it.
Oh, great. Thank you. Appreciate it.
I appreciate you mentioning transparency. That's exactly what I'd like to note that this practice going forward will do, will afford us, added level of transparency. Is there anything from the other side of the table?
I'll just add that this is typical with the number of people that are on the SEA negotiating team too. They don't just have a couple of people.
Yeah, they'll have at least four.
A team like this size.
Hi, Tim.
Hi. Might be for you or Steve. So what's your role, Steve, then? Going to be, are you-
Typically superintendent, generally plays more of the moderator as you're getting closer to negotiating a deal.
Okay.
And usually is not part of this initial part. Now, I'll still be consulting, but in terms of the actual negotiations, it's generally not done with the superintendent.
Okay, that's nice.
And to anticipate a question, M A S B recently, I was listening to Brad Van Assick talking about this very thing and one of the podcasts from M A S B, and they say that it's extraordinarily rare that any board members are on the team, although it does happen. It's extremely rare and probably a best practice not to be on the negotiating team, so. Carol, thank you so much.
You're welcome. Thank you.
Put this to a vote, please.
Thanks, Susan.
Oh, thank you. Was there anything else you wanted to add? Thank you. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you. Thank you very much. We have one scheduled report. They're in the hot seat now. Soon they're going to be at the hot podium. I'd like to introduce our presenters, Ashley Mantha and Jeff Pike. Jeff has the clicker, so now we're official.
I think we're live now. We're on a hotspot, as you just said. There we go. Well, I appreciate us being here and with you all again. Seems like every February, so it's good to see all the faces. Like I said, it's a report that we were scheduled for, so we're kind of doing athletic updates, a behind-the-scenes, so to speak, of athletics. Our main focus is the 2022, '23 school year, last school year because it's in its finality. It is completed, so we can report all the numbers accurately versus where we are right now, which is still finishing up this school year and winter season and spring hasn't even started yet, so. With our department right now, thank you for doing the clicker. Appreciate it. This is our department. We return, this is, we have finished year two as of January. So it's been two complete full years, January not school years. And we're excited to go into our third year together as a group of three, so. By the numbers, I'm going to move this for a second. Here we go. Sorry. This is a slide that we showed last year, but just to kind of reiterate, our sports that are under our purview in the Athletic Department. There are 35 high school sports programs, boys and girls, as well as nine middle school programs that are in the Athletic Department. There's a little bit of color coordination there for yourself, just to see, as Corey before for Boys Lacrosse came and did the public comment, mentioned that Boys Lacrosse and Girls Lacrosse is a self-funded varsity sport. So they're all varsity sports under our purview, but there's where it becomes whether it's district subsidized or self-funded is where that difference is. So you can kind of see the yellow versus the gray, but there are, in the big picture, there are plenty of opportunities for our students in the fall, winter, and spring. And as you can kind of see, I know there's a lot to kind of take in there, but we kind of break down, you know, JV, junior varsity, varsity, FR is freshman, and then obviously middle school, sixth, seventh, or eighth. We're mostly focused on seventh and eighth because that's MHSAA grade level. We do provide opportunities for some of our sixth graders and some of our bigger sports as well. But that is just kind of like a nice little look of what is under the Athletic Department umbrella for the high school and the middle school, basically. This is a new slide just because we've had some questions this past year of just kind of understanding classification of where is Celine and is that changing? And sometimes you hear, every state kind of classifies their schools differently. Sometimes use the word division, sometimes as class. You hear these different letters like B, C, D, E, or, you know, Division 1, 2, 3, 4, 5, 6, 7, 8 kind of thing. So to kind of give more clarification to that, Celine is MHSAA sanctioned school and so we are a Class A school and should be for the foreseeable future because as you can kind of see by that yellow diagram, anything over enrollment of 807 for the high school will be a Class A school. So for the foreseeable future, we're Class A. Where it gets more fun is by sport. So MHSAA has multiple sports and basically whether a school can sponsor a sport puts in those numbers. So for instance, there are 756 high schools in Michigan. So in theory, you could have 756 soccer teams, you could have 100 swim teams, you could have 200 hockey teams, and I'm just using general numbers right now. But every sport is different and that's why sometimes you see, as my example is shown on the slideshow, there sometimes is, golf has four divisions, football has eight divisions, swim and dive has three divisions. And so it's not just because of some random arbitrary numbering. It's, does a school actually sponsor those sports to equal, that equal divide of divisions? For right now, we are Division One across the board for MHSAA sports. But if you look at that third bullet point, and I got a hockey player here too, kind of seen in my gymnastics, we got you. But as far as different divisions, hockey right now, we're about, you know, very close to, our number next year is going to be 1643. We're 20 students away from being Division Two hockey. When you talk about little things like that of Division Two State Championship versus Division One State Championship, who are your opponents, obviously, we're seeing enrollment down in Celine, but also throughout our SEC as well. So we don't know that bar. It might be set the same or are we all going down together, basically? The enrollment that happened at count day in February around Valentine's Day, that's the number we use for next school year. And we count our alternative high school, ECA, why high in that number? So if you go in power school, it's not just straight up what's in our physical high school, but also alternative high school, who can play sports for us, basically. And so that number for us next year is going to be 1643. And that, we'll find out in March, maybe April, of where we'll be for next year. And we project Division One for most of our sports, but in case something happens, we could be Division Two Swim, we could be Division Two Hockey, Division One Soccer, and Division One Tennis. It could be different based on the sport. And so if you start to hear things like that, we're seeing a lot of those numbers change too. So just wanted to give a little bit of heads up on that and just kind of understanding when someone says Class A or Division One, that's what that's really talking about.
So these numbers pretty much speak for themselves. The idea that we have a lot of students who are participating in both high school level sports and our middle school sports. Again, these are roster spots, so this is not 1,184 of the high school students participating. It's 1,184 roster spots. And same thing for the middle school. So we have a lot of student athletes who are participating. So Caroline, good example of multi-sport athletes. That's increasingly rare, but that's included in all of these numbers. As far as the coaches, 156 different adults filling the 185 coaching positions and that includes volunteer coaching positions. And then something that's not on there that we were looking at earlier today, there are 40 different staff members, SAS staff members, who are coaches and some of them multiple-season coaches. And that's something that's remarkable because we obviously would love to have our staff connecting with our students in different ways. So definitely applaud those staff members for putting in that extra time. So this has a lot more information, some of the different things that we do. So first and foremost, my most fun job is eligibility checks. So at the end of each trimester, I make sure that our student athletes have passed the necessary requirements according to MHSAA. Having said that, we have higher standards than MHSAA requires. So every two weeks, I will go through for both our high school students and our middle school students and make sure that they do not have one E or more than one D. And if they were to fall into the bad grade situation of either of those things, they do not participate. They do have a five-day leeway period to get their grades up if there's missing work to be turned in, et cetera. And parents and coaches and students are all consulted in that. And so that's something that is, something we take pride in and will come back on the other side and the next slide as far as grades and how well our students do. You might remember last year when we came, we talked about Big Teams. Big Teams is our registration system. Some of you will agree, the first time you log in your child in Big Teams, you think that you've like, you've suddenly gotten really old and don't know how to do any electronic work at all. And then the good news is, once you're in, you're in. So that's helpful. But it is thorough. It collects a lot of information. It allows our coaches and our office to see everything and to keep track. We no longer have papers that we have to worry about finding someone's athletic physical. God forbid there's an emergency. Everything is electronic. The coaches and trainers have that on hand. So that's a big thing. Something we did last year, working with Community Ed and with Lori Dawson, the Clubs and Extracurricular Advisor, we all have our handbook together now. So our policies are the same across the board. And the goal in that is to make it consistent for students and for family members. And so the link on there is our most recent update from 2023 in which we did that. Other things that we've done, we try to offer a lot of leadership opportunities for our students. And so some of our athletes joined us, a couple of different SEC conferences that we have. Each of the 14 SEC schools will bring 10 students to different things. So a leadership conference we do in the fall. And then Ashley and the AD from Pioneer and a couple of our teachers and administrators from Dexter were leaders in creating a women's leadership conference to celebrate the 50th anniversary of Title IX last year. And so that was something that our conference had never done. We then invited 10 female student athletes from each of the 14 schools as well to offer leadership training and guest speakers. And that's something that they continued with this past year, so we'll talk about that next year. As far as DEI, we are both committed to continuing that work. And last school year, we had Dr. Washington going team by team to have a session on being a good ally. And that's something we wholeheartedly believe in and look forward to continuing now. Even though Dr. Washington has moved on, we are looking to continue that with our teams for each season going forward. And then the last thing is somewhat delicate is our student section expectations. And what we are trying to do is to have the students have fun and also not cross the line. And so as educators, we are trying to teach them gestures that would not be appropriate, but others that would be, or sayings that would perhaps not be appropriate or... And we want the kids to have fun. We don't want to have a reputation among our opponents or officials of being obnoxious. We want to be loud and we want to have everyone enjoy themselves. And that's really a conference-wide thing. The conference tries to get us to avoid saying names and numbers and cheering for your team, not against the other team. This is more of a societal thing. This is obviously not just Celine or the SEC, but big goals that we have, to say the least. I mentioned the academics and grade checks. This is why we do the grade checks and the reflection here is kind of amazing that we have student athletes who are taking additional hours of their weeks consistently. And in each of the three trimesters, you can see for the high school students, this is, from varsity athletes, their GPAs are higher than the average student. And perhaps this isn't a surprise that you know if a student athlete is involved in something, they are committed. So you're committed to your team and you're also committed to your studies. But this is to commend all of the student athletes. For these high achievements, that's kind of amazing to look at what they've been able to do in the classroom because really, that's what we're about. We're about educational athletics. When Ashley and I were hired, we talked about student athlete, the student coming first and this is really what the emphasis should be placed on. So congrats to the students for that.
To follow up the academic excellence, there is, we have, we always want to make note of the athletic achievements as well from 2022, 2023. And this is, I know it's a lot of color coming out here right now, but I know. If you want to zone in on the yellow or the gold, you can kind of, you find Celine real easy, right? Everything else, you're just like, ah, it's other schools. But what's basically, what you're looking at is there's 14 schools in the SEC. There's eight schools in the red division, which Celine is in, and there are six schools in the white division. And they make up our nice conference. Each season, we kind of keep track historically of which school takes what sport title, so to speak. And so on that left column, you see fall sports. In the middle, you see winter sports. And spring sports on the far right. And we were very blessed to have nine of the possible 26 SEC championships last year. Quick math, that's one and three, basically that Celine team won for the conference, which is an amazing feat in itself. Like I said, you'll see some schools in there that have maybe one championship and we were fortunate to have nine last year. So if you can kind of see the yellow, you see boys cross-country, boys soccer, girls volleyball, girls basketball, boys ice hockey, baseball, girls soccer, softball, and boys track and field. So it's something very proud to be, like I said, the conference that we're part of.
And besides the conference championships, the next three slides will just do a brief breakdown from each of the three seasons of not just SEC championships, but district and regional championships. So as you can see, for boys cross-country, finishing seventh in the state. Fall of 2022, girls cross-country, fourth in the state. Girls field hockey in the semifinals and I look forward to when they beat- girls field hockey in the semifinals, and I look forward to when they beat Pioneer. Uh, boys soccer, uh, going to the regional finals, girls swim and dive, third in the state, including a state champion diver. Uh, girls volleyball, as uh Dr. Latch presented earlier, uh, making it to the state semifinals. Uh, and then boys water polo in the quarterfinals of regionals. Uh, from winter, uh, you have uh girls basketball, uh, also won districts besides winning the conference. Uh, gymnastics last year qualified three for the states. Uh, boys hockey pictured there, the SEC champions. Uh, that was their back-to-back year. Uh, boys swim and dive finished sixth in state in twenty twenty-three, and wrestling won the district championship as well as qualifying three wrestlers for the state finals. And then lastly, from spring of twenty twenty-three, uh, baseball league and district champions, golf, sixteenth in states, rowing, two students qualifying for nationals, girls soccer making a two-state semifinals. Softball also, uh, district champions as well as conference champions. Boys track and field, tenth in the state, girls track and field, thirtieth in the state, and water polo finishing sixth in the state. And uh one picture to highlight on that screen there, the boys and girls softball teams. We hosted the districts for both of those uh teams, and they both won championships within half an hour of one another. So they were able to come together for a truly championship uh picture. So that was pretty cool. Uh, overall, we also have three different uh signing days that you sometimes uh hear about or maybe see on our social media that we have students who are playing at the next level, and so we celebrate that three times a year as they officially commit to their uh next level of education and athletic uh achievement.
So into our coach training requirements, I get a lot of questions of, I mean, we we just talked about one hundred and eighty-five coaching positions, right? That's that's the community to run all of our programs. Um, and we do want to make sure, we're gonna talk about safety and just the train that goes into it, just to know behind the scenes. Um, we all talk about just, oh, coaches just show up and just do it, but um, it is a part-time job on paper. We all know it's full-time responsibility and full-time care, right, that we all appreciate our coaches doing. Um, they are the first responder a lot of times. They are uh mandatory reporters. They are mentors. They're the first line for mental health sometimes. It's all these things that we, you know, we put on a part-time job, so to speak. Um, and we want to give them credit for that, and they're excellent in that. Um, and just kind of an understanding of where they're coming from, what's required to be a coach at Celine area schools. Um, every single coach is fingerprinted. They're not allowed to be around our students, paid or not, volunteer, um, before they're fingerprinted and cleared. Um, they do, every single head coach, varsity JV freshman middle school, has to be CPR trained, and that um, we work with Nurse Karen and she does collaboration. We do three times a year. So there's opportunities always to be recertified. Um, for those what-if situations, unfortunately, should they arise. Um, to go along with that, our team emergency action plans. Uh, Mickey Tolet and Natalie are athletic trainers, which I'll talk about more in a second. Um, they go around with our teams and actually show, where's your nearest nearest AED? What happens if coach goes down? What happens if student goes down? All these kind of situations, where's, how do you do nine-one-one? Who does all those kind of risk assessments? So our athletic trainers are very awesome for that, and they go around with our teams. Um, our coaches are also, um, each, I should say, each high school has to go through uh a rules test, which is nice for their sport-specific, but within that, there's a mental health aspect, as well as concussion, heat index, all those other safety things, very similar to what teachers do for GNC training and all those bloodborne pathogens, all those kind of other safety issues, videos watching. Um, then I'd to add on to that, we have our coach meeting. We had a retreat this past August first, where all of our coaches were invited, high school and middle school. We did an onboarding, we did safety. Um, Rex actually came and talked about the bond a little bit. Uh, we had some socializing. But a lot of that was um basically onboarding, and there's a slideshow there, which I know you all can click on, but others, our coaches have access to that as well. Um, we do have some parent and student surveys we started last year, so we can kind of get an inside of what's going on day to day with our teams, because Mr. Pike and I are unfortunately not there twenty-four seven with every single team. Um, as we do have, I know it's crazy, right? We can't be everywhere. I put thirty-five teams, I know. So the inside uh scoop, so to speak, we can kind of hear back from students and families. Um, varsity coaches are required to have CAP one or two, which is MHSAA's um Coach Advancement Program. Basically, it's training coaches to be coaches. Um, there's different, there's eight different levels, and they each are six hours, and you can get to professional development hours for going to those as well. Um, but it's just nice of, you know, some might know their sports, but maybe they don't know how to coach, per se. So it's that person coming out um to learn how to coach, and that's a simplified version of it. Um, every time I hire a new coach, I do have mentoring with them. I onboard them for a few hours. I guess there's a document there of a recent hire. Um, but we do go through to make sure that they not only know Celine's institutional knowledge, but they get them ready and things that I wish I had known when I was a new varsity coach, per se, kind of thing. So it's kind of one of those, you've been in the trenches, let me try to help you with what I wish I had known, or I do know, so to speak. Um, we provide them with a mentor coach as well that might be more experienced for something I may not be able to answer for them, per se. Um, and the Be Nice Mental Health Program is available for all of our teams. That is run through MHSAA. It's part of their coach meeting as well. Um, and then we're also in the process of, um, we worked on our student handbook this past summer. So another fun project for us this summer will be working on our coaches handbook, which will be in complimentary of our um our summer retreat and our um, meetings already, like I'm making a handbook, so to speak of that. So, um, yeah, thank you. I kind of mentioned some of these already, but um, you know, when you have certain situations like Bronny James, um, basketball player and Damar Hamlin last year, all these situations you might see on TV or in the news, where athletes go down, unfortunately, those bizarre situations, even though you're planned, you have everything situated, but those what-if situations, and we try to do our best to prepare our coaches, our students, our athletic trainers, um, just for those un, you know, unfortunate situations. Um, like I mentioned before, our coach training, every coach uh goes through concussion videos, CPR training, um, EAPs is emergency action plans with our athletic trainers. Um, we have AEDs all around our athletic facilities. I believe we're at ten right now, just with easy access. Our athletic trainers also always have a portable AED on them, so whether they're outside, in the pool, the gym, um, they always have one near them. So we're very fortunate that we have usable ones. Um, we start, I have a group message with all my head coaches for those quick instances where email just doesn't do it, right? There's no informer cast outside, which I love that system, but it's one of those things where five guys rowing in the water, golf course, bowling alley, hockey rink, or everywhere, right? That kind of thing. So I do have a group message going with our coaches, um, for those snow day cancellations, heat index, when the web globe thermometer says, hey, one oh five, we're done with all activities, right? Um, if there's a lockdown, fortunately, we had the Walmart situation a year ago, that that kind of thing, where it's like, hey, if you're outside, time to come on in, kind of thing. Our own version of our athletic um safety protocols. Um, and as I mentioned, we we are very fortunate to have two full-time athletic trainers. Um, so we always have someone, whether it be inside, outside, especially when you start having, uh, let's say volleyballs inside, soccers outside, water polos in the pool, right? Multiple locations, everyone has their contact information, and they're easily accessible. And of course, nine-one-one for those emergency ones. But um, we are very fortunate to have two students usually from Adrian College work with our athletic trainers, extra hands to help with those, I don't wanna say mundane tasks, but taping, Band-Aids, you know, those where they're not fully trained yet, but they're they're able to assist, or our trainers can look after the more serious things as needed. Of security, we do hire out Pittsfield Township Police and Security for those bigger events, whether it be football, basketball, soccer, hosting districts, regionals, where there's just the presence alone de-escalates a lot of those situations, in case there's fighting, in case there's rivalry. Um, it's just those what-if situations, someone's already onsite and can call it backup if needed. Um, and so we do hire out for those bigger games. We also provide game workers for more of that spectator, those low escalations, if hopefully they never need to, but for that. And of course, our official safety, it's uh, they like to go after our officials sometimes, those the spectators, right? Go figure, I know. We gotta protect them too, because we want them to come back. We want to have games go on, right? Um, and then obviously, we are administrative support, whether it be central office, our principals, our deans. Um, when they're there too, the students, our our parents, everything is just, it just runs together as one big, it works so well, nice together. Yes, it's very nice. Um, of course, all this costs money, right? Um, we kind of showed this last year, and the numbers have changed just slightly, but you know, not too much. The same categories um are very much saying the same big categories. Um, it's always interesting when I talk to people outside of here, or just, you know, small talk, they're like, oh, why don't you pay for this? What's going on? Where does the money go? Um, Celine has everything, your facilities are beautiful, you must have millions and unlimited wallet. Um, as you all know, we are a public school, right? There is a finite amount. Um, we are very fortunate to have what we have. Um, but just for those people to kind of, like I said, pull the curtains back of knowing where our money goes, Miranda was so kind to give me a nice little easy version of looking up these numbers. So, um, though we almost have a one point five million dollars, that sounds amazing. When you really break it down into, as we talked about, eleven hundred roster spots, thirty-five um sports at the high school, nine at the middle school, one hundred and eighty-five coaches that you have to pay, certain things, the money just evaporates real quick. Um, and that one big category, the biggest one, is our salaries and benefits, which is one point one million dollars out of that one point four six. So with that, we basically have about three hundred and fifty thousand dollars left to take care of the other necessities, to make sure the games go on. And this money is for our district subsidized. Um, no team is fully one hundred percent. There's, everyone has these, you know, myths of like, oh, they, this team gets this, this team gets this. In in full transparency, there is no team that gets everything from from taxpayer dollars. And that's where student activity account and fundraisers and additional donations and so forth comes into play to cover those other items that teams will need. So a couple of things on there that of note, um, as I mentioned, one point one million dollars for salaries and benefits. Our athletic trainers that we so appreciate and for our safety. Um, we have two of them, so we're paying their salaries through Trinity Elite. Uh, hundred thousand. Our officials, to make sure the games go on, and the game workers, so scoreboard operators, um, book, all those kind of things, just to make sure the game goes on. Uh, we spend about eighty thousand. Transportation, when available, we appreciate when we do have bus drivers, and by the way, we need more bus drivers in case you're hearing this. Um, so, um, when we do are able to, we're spending about sixty-five thousand dollars uh on that. Um, security and police, as I mentioned, about fifteen thousand. Uh, to enter tournaments, invites, about thirty thousand. And then we are left with about seventy thousand each each school year to spend on miscellaneous things that come up. Last year, we had a couple of scoreboards go down, right? We rent, uh, we have to rent porta-johns for those big events like track and baseball and softball. So all these little things that start to add up that are ancillary, but still very much necessary is where that extra miscellaneous kind of comes into. And then all of a sudden, we're just, we're tapped out, kind of thing. Goes really quickly, as I mentioned. Um, but it is, yes, I was gonna say, goodness, perfect. I'm gonna let, oh, it's still me, never mind. Carry on. More budget stuff. Um, a lot of those, the common budget questions too, as we just mentioned, it's about one point five million. But a lot of people say, well, you just had a hundred and eighty million dollar, you know, bond. Why don't you just use money for that? Um, and as, I know you all know this, but that money, yep, that money is set for what you voted on, right? And so we cannot pull money. So if I need a new bench for a current weight room, nope, that money's going to the new weight room, right? And so a lot of people are like, oh, you have all the money, but no, that is set aside for what is um determined for. So um, pay-to-play participation fees. Um, we do collect these. Uh, high school is three hundred and twenty-five dollars. Middle school is two hundred and seventy-five, and that is for the entire school year. So whether you play one sport, two sport, three sport, is a one-time per school year. Um, we do have waivers, we do have scholarships available, need-based, um, and that's something you come talk to our athletic office about, and we can take care of that as well. Um, but that brings in about two hundred and seventy thousand dollars. So a lot of people say, oh, it should cover everything. And as I just mentioned, we spent about one point five million, so two hundred and seventy thousand is is helping, but it is not covering all of our costs. We're not a cost-neutral department. Um, some other revenues we take in is our gate revenue, um, about seventy-five thousand to a hundred and ten. And that does range because based on how many home games we have versus away games. Each year could be different, each season's a little bit different. But it is a nice little range of understanding of what we expect to take in as far as revenue. Um, it does offset some of our department costs, but once again, um, it's kind of a drop in the bucket of our one point five. It doesn't fully cover that. Um, so with that being said, all of that one point four six, as mentioned, um, with approximately three hundred and fifty thousand revenue, our actual cost, the uh general budget is around one point one million dollars. So just kind of having those numbers out there as well. Mr. Pike.
So as far as communication, obviously, very important to get the word out and to help our student athletes and our parents, uh, and guardians. Uh, the website is something I'm very proud of. Um, that was part of big teams. Not only is there the registration side of things, but there's the schedule, and everything is updated immediately on that. Uh, it gives directions to events. Uh, and then when the events are over, I try to get every single score from every single sport, uh, seventh grade all the way up, um, regardless. So uh, that's something that's uh an important thing. And along with that, as as far as spreading information, uh, social media. Uh, last year that I, uh, we were here, I joked about not knowing about social media, and yet I'm in charge of it. Um, and thanks to my seventeen-year-olds at home, I now can do Instagram a little bit better than last year, so uh, there's that. But um, truthfully, this is something that i- it helps spread the word from our successes. It helps add to information, and so that's incredibly important. Uh, something else that Ashley does every week is uh send out a district-wide uh schedule for what's going on, and then highlights of different things. Uh, especially such as right now, we're in playoff season, and so each week, giving an idea of what is upcoming for teams or how teams uh performed. Uh, we also include that type of information in our school newsletters, so that works for the middle school and high school students as well. Uh, sometimes we'll have information that we need to send out through Student Central, which is is the big teams. And so therefore, if we hire a new coach, everyone who participated in that sport previously uh gets a uh message to know what's going on for for that. Uh, and then hopefully for February in perpetuity, we will be here to uh to update for the board. So uh, the goal overall with communication, obviously, um, is to always improve and to always give access to information. And so if members of the public ever have any question, uh, obviously, we can uh try to help them in any way possible. Uh, so lastly, just uh thank you. Um, we, uh, the three of us in our office could not do this without the support of countless people. Uh, the student athletes, like the two that are represented here today, um, we wouldn't be here to watch them and to praise them. Uh, so that would, that would be a huge. And then, as I said earlier, the coaches, the amount of time that the coaches put into it, the pride, and it's not just about winning, it's about teaching. And so that's something we uh are very, very proud of. Uh, parents and volunteers, whether it's a funded sport or a partially funded sport, uh, that it takes a lot of people involved, and uh we're very, very thankful for that. Uh, for buildings and grounds, and then also skip down to transportation to thank uh Rex and everyone in his department. Um, the fields are always in pristine shape. The number of times we get compliments from other schools about that is is countless. Uh, and as far as transportation, while we do need more bus drivers, this year, we have had a lot more of our teams able to use our transportation. So we're very, very thankful for uh buildings and grounds and transportation for that. Uh, and the custodial staff uh who are always there to set up and always there to clean up. Uh, we obviously uh depend on them greatly. Uh, Ashley's talked about the trainers and security, our administrators and teachers, uh, the number of times that we'll have other coaches say, wait a minute, your principal, your superintendent is coming to your sporting events? And we say, yes, and we're, we we know we're lucky in that regard. But perhaps also, that should be a a something that we uh thank everyone for. So thanks, Dr. Latch, appreciate all of that. Um, and then the community and Board of Ed, all of your support for all of these things that we do. It's not just about the dollars. Uh, it's about the kids. And so thank you very much for for what you do to support us in our endeavors.
Thank you for a great presentation. Now, I know you um, you brought hydration this evening with any
I'm recovering from a little sickness last week, so it's not, you know, prep for this, but we are ready.
We we may have a few questions for you, but I, if there are any extended disco questions uh that need to be taken offline, I know you'll be able to respond very quickly. So anyone around the table have any urgent pressing questions? Start with uh Mr. Austin.
Mine's not really a question, but been attending probably more of the sporting events this year, and uh see you two at a lot of them. And so your 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 day doesn't just go from eight or seven to five, it's long nights on many nights. So, thanks.
All right, I have a few things. Um, first of all, um, before I get too far into this, um, I was talking to to Jenny Miller, and she wanted to reiterate to you, because she couldn't be here tonight, how fortunate and how lucky she feels to have been able to have her three children go through high-level programs. Um, you've mentioned like having senior signing events. Those are really special things for families, and I thank you for doing those things. I know it doesn't just happen. So anyway. Um, I also want to reiterate my incredibly strong support and thankfulness for and gratefulness for the for the amount of programs we run and the quality of the programs we run. Whether it's you guys, it's coaches, it's like you mentioned, that whole list of of individuals with buildings and grounds, and I even think about people like helping with concessions and making sure we have pizza, and like, just simple things, but we do things at such a high level. Um, one thing I would say is that, and every time I pay my kid soccer, I always think about this, what incredible value we get for three hundred and twenty-five dollars. I mean, our coaches are not just good, they're great, right? They could get jobs in other places, and they could do high-level coaching things, and we get them for three hundred and twenty-five dollars a seat. Or even a year, and you get multiples. So anyway, I want to make sure that I I say like, thank you for all the opportunities that our kids have and all of it. I appreciate the emails that you send us with events and keeping us updated. I appreciate the focus, you know, a year ago when you came to us, we were having some culture challenges. And I want you to know how much I appreciate and support. And I want you to know how much I appreciate as a board member, and I almost am like nervous to say this out loud, but like, it appears some of that has calmed down. Um, and so I know that doesn't just happen, that's training, that's individualization with athletes and teams. And so I want you to hear from me how much I appreciate the two of you and your leadership, and that, I'm sure that goes in a top-down way, so thank you for that. I wanna, I loved the idea of athletic trainers going over safety with their teams, right? I'm a, I'm a Manchester, you know, teacher, and I've been a former coach, and I've never done it. Like, as a, that, what a smart thing to do with your individual, you know, we, we, we do fire drills. We do all these things to practice for that, and you're right with like LeBron James's son and Hamlin, and like, those things happen. And so anyway, I, I just want you to know that I, I really, um, thought about that. Uh, I really love our prioritization about academics and success. And, you know, and one of the things, I guess I'm not surprised to see that, um, our student athletes do such a good job because they have to have such strong team, time management skills, right? And so that's one thing that if I was like pushing, I'd say, this is a reason why to join a team and to try, as far earlier, talking about lacrosse, you know? Try it, because I think, one, your kid is gonna be surrounded by positive energy and positive things to do every day after school, but also have to learn those basic time management skills, you learn how to do that and do it well. So, anyway, so that's that. All right, so here are my questions, um, and you don't have to answer them now. Um, this public comment got me thinking about this, how often do we revisit, um, self-funded versus district programs? How often do we look at that?
I feel like I do it daily, but, to be fair, no, I, I, it's, we've talked about this with, uh, finance with, um, there's a lot of things that go into the why, and I would love to support, honestly, and that honestly becomes, hey, board, I need more money, kind of thing. Um, as you kind of saw within our thirty-five teams, or it's, hey, we need to remove some teams, which I don't want to do, I'm not trying to scare anyone listening right now, kind of thing. But it's one of those things when there's a diminishing interest and teams start to shrink, you're like, well, is it worthwhile to continue paying for this sport versus maybe something that's growing? Um, and so it is a yearly thing for sure that we actually talk about, um, but I, I made a joke, but honestly, there's teams weekly that hit me up and were like, hey, what about us? What about us? And they're like, I, it's growing, your sport is growing, but we need this, we need this, or we need this.
Do we have systems though in place where like we do a review every three years, or we do a review, that's what I'm wondering?
It's very funny, we had an extracurricular meeting today and I actually brought that subject up. I keep, he's laughing, because it's one of those, it's, it's such on a, there is no policy per se. Um, there's nice little, there's direction, there's guidance, there's what do you think is best? Um, but that's what, I was meeting with Lori Dawson, um, Ashley Howes, the Community Education, it's like, why is this sport under you? Why is this sport under club, why is it me? How do we get it from, you know, community sport to a varsity sport versus a self-funded sport versus a district subsidized? But it's like, what are those levels? Um, and we do have a very rough draft of what that looks like, but, um, we actually, I'm in charge of that committee now to make sure we have a better process in place for, I mean, I'll use boys volleyball as an example, it's growing, it's in community ed right now. MHSA might be voting on it soon to make it an MHSA sanctioned sport. And that's exciting, it's growing, right? It went from like ten teams to now fifty-eight teams in the state. That's exciting, but one, but then it becomes, okay, where's the facility it's gonna use? It's a boys' sport, Title IX complications, I gotta bring in a girls' sport now. All these things, it's not just like, ooh, I like your sport, kind of thing. So it is definitely a daily, uh, conversation in our athletic office of, um, sports, that we, we would love everyone to be part of athletic, yeah, it's a great question.
And I, and I appreciate you doing that, and I want to make sure that I also state, um, at, in my public comment, I had stated my strong preference for us revisiting things like letter processes and recognizing more students. And those conversations, I've been told, are happening, and so I want you to hear from me, thank you. All right, I, I'm, I am thankful for you continuing to look for ways that we can recognize as many students as possible. I'm just, I've been hearing a little scuttlebutt about more divisions in sports. So like, for example, not having four state champions in basketball, having six, like we, or eight, like we do in, in basketball. Is that actually a, potentially a real thing, or is just like, what, to be determined?
That, to be determined, the rep council of MHSA votes on certain things, and they usually announce things in May. Um, that is based on each sport, it wouldn't be just across the board for sports, it'd be individualized. Um, and that's based on what is their bracket look like for districts, regionals, and states. Um, football has sixty-four in each of them because they like to do a, you're doing a one-on-one competition, it goes from thirty-two to sixteen to eight to four to two. You can't just have a hundred random teams in one division, right? Uh, versus basketball has about two hundred and fifty schools in each division. So when you say you're a Division One champion of one sport, you might have, oop, sorry, there's a little river back there. Um, so every sport does have different, um, nuances, and that'd be voted on by sport at MHSA, and then it comes down to us and we accommodate to that. Yeah.
I'll tell you that I would be a strong proponent of more divisions and letting more kids feel what it's like to be a champion. Right, and feel good about those things. Um, anyway, so I, I have a couple of other things that I think I'm gonna send you via email, thank you very much though, like, I appreciate it, you're here late. Thank you, thank you, thank you.
It's lunchtime soon.
Looks like we're sliding the other table, but I do want to give the students representatives a chance to pipe up if they have something.
Um, I just want to say thank you because this year the gymnastics team did go through the process of hiring a new coach. Ms. Mantha was great about that, so thank you, we love our coach, super excited to look for an assistant coach and continue to grow the program, so thank you for that.
Yeah, same with hockey, we appreciate everything you do for all the students with, uh, student section and teams and stuff like that. And hopefully soon, every single sport can be a school-funded sport.
We'd love to take you on hockey, I love hockey.
I don't know if we can pay for hockey.
Yeah, you're, you're ice time alone, we gotta talk.
Does the athletic department cover the cost of hair bleep?
I hear they cover that themselves, but you're styling, you're styling.
Working down the table, we have, uh, Jennifer and.
Uh, Go Hornets, thank you for the great presentation, and Michael, thank you for specifically calling out Mateo and Caroline since they are excellent representatives of, um, academics and athleticism at, at the high school. Um, I had one question and a couple of comments, so at the last board meeting and, and my, my personal comments, I said something about how I have had the opportunity to visit a lot of high schools in winter sports season this year. And, um, I am just very impressed by the ambassadors that our student athletes really are for both academics and for how they carry themselves as representatives of our district when they're out of the building. Um, and then conversely, when we're hosting things and, um, the comments that, that I get when I'm wearing my Hornet gear and they don't know I'm on the Board of Education and, and other family members saying, uh, saying, wow, like, our grandkids get to have this. Or, or people from other districts saying what beautiful facilities you have and how excellent they're, they're maintained and how, um, staff are present to, to support those, those students, um, it really matters and it shines through. And so I hope that you do hear that we also hear that all of the time, so thank you. Um, also, thank you for all of the, the facets with regards to, I don't want to steal Lawrence Thunderston, she's the physician and not me, but, but there's a, a lot of diligence, whether it's in the big teams with the, um, the forms, uh, or it's, it's the trainers, it's Dr. Dean. Um, thank you, I'm so glad they were all there in Belleville with us during the last football season, they were like another coach on the field. Um, it's so important, and emergencies do happen, and we read about those all the time, so it's really nice. When we talk about safety and security, we, we focus on our buildings and our grounds quite a bit, but we have a lot of, um, both staff and students who are out at, you know, um, you know, whether it's rowing, or whether it's swimming, or whether they're at a golf course somewhere else, like you said, so it's, it's really important. Um, I wanted to ask about data from the surveys that you mentioned. And first of all, thank you for asking parents and guardians and for asking students, I thought, I think that's very important. But my question was, um, can you tell us a little bit about what happened with that? And, and kind of, um, if you think you'll repeat that process for winters and spring sports and moving forward in the future?
Yes, so I usually wait till the season ends before I send them out. Um, I know as a cheer mom, you'll be getting yours shortly, kind of thing, and Jenny, as a swim parent, will be getting, dive, will be getting hers as well. Um, we did that last year, and it was a very, I think, since this was the first year, a lot of parents and kids were apprehensive, they're like, who's gonna see this? Where is it going? And I tried to put that proactive message of, it comes to me and only me. Um, and so that, it's, doing this the second time around, we started in the fall again, um, I've seen a lot more come through this year than I did last fall. Because I don't tell names, kind of thing, not that's because it's supposed to be, you know, a little sneaky or anything, it's just more sometimes like, hey, coach, this is something you're doing great. I want to highlight this, and they're like, oh, I didn't know they liked that. Like, oh, your overnight camp trip, that's great team bonding, they love that, they love the T-shirts, they love the team dinners, you know, all those kind of things that, coaches need to hear positive affirmation as well. So I'd say ninety-five percent has been positive, kind of thing, and every now and then, I'd say that five percent, I'm just making up percentages, by the way, but it's very small. Um, where it's something like room for improvement. Hey, did you know when you do your cut process, you're actually making a kid feel bad when you do it this way? What if you changed it to this, kind of thing? So we kind of have those conversations at the end of the season where I talk with themes with my coach. I don't say, hey, Jeff Pike said this of you, I say, you know, a parent recommended that, they didn't really like your cut process, like, walk me through what you do, kind of thing. So we talk about themes and patterns and, um, and just kind of highlight the things like I mentioned, like, that needs to be given kudos and some things that may be for improvement, but I've definitely seen more come in for students and, um, parents. And I need to find a bit way to get more, even more, kind of thing, because, um, like a team of twenty, I might get seven or eight back, kind of thing. So it's not a full encompassing view, but it's enough where I can get an idea of someone that's really happy or someone that has some concerns, so to speak.
So I filled out three of them for fall, um, so I got to experience this firsthand, I was like, oh, I was, I was very impressed. And, and I think being on the board now in my sixth year and seeing the emails that we've received over the years, sometimes we hear a lot about certain topics, but we always wonder about what's the other ninety percent thinking, or what's the other eighty? Again, I don't know the exact percentages, and I think that those evaluations and especially asking for student voice give every single participant and family the opportunity to speak up and feel, um, like it's, uh, it's safe. And, and that they can, they can report that, and so, thank you.
Thank you.
Hi, um, a couple of questions were answered, well, asked and then answered. Um, because I was, uh, curious about, uh, the self-funded versus, uh, district subsidized. Um, is anything covered with the self-funded or like the coaches or?
Uh, the short answer is no, um, so for ice hockey, for example, like, um, they pay for everything, everything. And so you're talking, um, uh, ice time and uniforms and travel and things like that. Um, for the, uh, district-funded sports, there are still going to be sometimes team fees that are additional or expectations of working concession stands or things like that. So, uh, trying to find a balance between those things. Um, but again, the, the money is, is limited unfortunately, and whether we'd love to take on boys lacrosse as, uh, as Corey talked about in the, um, public time. Um, we'd love to do that for multiple sports, but unfortunately not, not able to do that all the time.
Um, have you considered, or I guess something to consider, um, maybe, well, sometimes if you don't use the seventy thousand, um, or like having sort of a grant fund or some funding that you could give some, like, each of the teams or that they can apply for, for specific things, um, just, just putting an idea out there.
Um, Miranda, not to put you on, like, we've talked a lot about different possibilities, um, because in my head, I would love to give even a self-funded something, hey, maybe I'll pay your coaches. Or maybe I'll pay your buses, so at least you get to the event safe, kind of thing, so we've kind of worked those ways. Um, but that seventy Ks you just mentioned, it's, it's kind of like the, the, oh crap, kind of money where like, something broke, something needs to be maintained. You know, with, with baseball and softball scoreboards go down, those are about four or five thousand each, kind of thing, so those things of maintaining, it's the rainy day fun is a better word for it, I guess, so to speak of, um, but that's, we're, we're trying to find creative ways to help all of our teams. So we're, Miranda and I are brainstorming and we're, we look for, if you guys have ideas, we'll take it.
I have an idea, actually, I was gonna say something about the Foundation for Celine Area Schools in a little while. I, I know they do a lot of grants, and I know our, her friend, Jo Elton, um, has received a lot of grants over the years, whether, you know, in the beginning at Pleasant Ridge, all the way to the high school, I, I wonder if there's some kind of partnership there with the funding? Because sometimes they allocate X number of dollars, like I think it's ninety some, ninety thousand something this year, and not all of those go used. Um, and not, I, there, I know that they're not looking to subsidize something on an ongoing basis. They, they, you know, think about experimentation and new philosophies and teaching and things like that, but I don't know, so I would talk with them.
We definitely forward that on to our coaches, as well as the crap tree one that just came out this past week as well, so. As you said, for those once in a while, with new equipment, uniforms, something that doesn't happen every year, but those big things that are hard to purchase, for sure.
Um, I have multiple questions, did you have something related? I'm gonna spend an hour and a half on, on this. Um, so, uh, you mentioned the CPR, I think this came up last time, that it's only, like, head coaches are required. Um, and you mentioned athletic trainers, um, which is great, like, a, a support. Um, so I'm wondering, um, are athletic trainers at all sports? Um, and if, uh, a head coach isn't there, um, what, I guess, resources are there to use in case of an emergency?
Great question, so there is no athletic event unless a coach is there, kids can't just show up and like, in the gym, we actually shoot them out because there's no adult there for the what-if moments, so, uh, someone that's been I-chatted, background checked, CPR has to be there to open up the gym, open up the field, open up the pool, open up whatever may be. Um, and so, um, as you mentioned, not every coach, but every head coach, and that honestly is the majority of our coaches, because we don't have, um, I mean, I'll use, uh, let's say baseball, you've got your head varsity coach certified, your head JV coach is certified, your head freshman coach, so your three teams, everyone's certified. And most of the assistant coaches on baseball are CPR, because they're either PE teachers or someone else too, so, um, we do offer it to all of our coaches, but we, I actually keep track of every single head coach, when they're expiring, when they're due, and I email them saying, hey, yours is expiring in two months, another class is coming up, so we do keep track of our head coaches. Um, that does, majority of our coaches are head coaches, is what I'm trying to say, so there's always someone there. And to your athletic, um, trainer question, we always have someone on campus. Um, so whether you might be on the far grass field, but someone's at Hornet Stadium, so they're a hundred yards away or something, but they are present. We have a gator for outside, so they can get around quickly, so they're not just running for an emergency. Um, and inside, it's right by the main gym, um, for the high school of where they're located inside too. So when you talk about away events, that's on the, sometimes our trainer does travel for those collision sports that we know are gonna provide a lot more, more likely contact, um, or if there's nothing else going on, they just happen to be like, oh, I'm gonna go watch swim today. We don't expect swim to collide, um, but, you know, versus football, soccer, gymnastics, cheer, you know, when you're doing all the stunting, um, those bigger ones that are more likely for injury, but other schools also have athletic trainers on site as well, even though they're not ours, they're there to serve student athletes.
Cool, thank you. Um, and then, let me see, I guess this is one big question. Um, so I know that you all track, um, which is great, um, the grades, um, and where students can't participate. And I went through the, um, handbook, the athletic, athletic handbook, um, and was pleased to see that there was, um, a component of discipline. Um, and when discipline comes from the school, that, that will carry over to, um, the sport. And, um, I guess I'm curious as well, um, if there's athletic, um, component and things going on, does that get communicated to the school? So I guess my big question is, um, is there that great communication going on, um, as it is with the, you know, the grades and checking that? And, you know, making sure, um, those behaviors and everything, um, are, you know, yeah, being consistent. And then, uh, in a, in addition, um, if there is hate speech, um, or, um, you know, uh, comments going on, um, specifically, I guess, with, amongst the sports and, um, if that's, you know, not just that one student, but harm caused to possibly, you know, um, more athletes. Um, I know you have, all haven't did the DEI, um, eight, uh, training, um, recently, but I'm wondering how that's kind of handled as well.
So to your question, um, yes, I don't want to say I have them on speed dial, but I do have the principals in my phone for when we have issues off-campus or with our own. So to your point where if a student gets suspended during the day, that does affect their after-school activities as soon as we get notified as well. Um, and we are notified by the high school and middle school, they have their own documents that they send us. Um, so once they put it in the system, we get notified, so we can tell our coaches, hey, they're not playing today, they're not practicing today, whatever it may be. And vice versa, um, if we have a situation at the middle school or the high school where they're misbehaving, that does, we notify the principal, because there might be school consequences on top of, um, That does, we notify the principal, cause there might be school consequences on top of um, team consequences. It might be you're missing your next event, it might be suspension from the team, it might be expulsion from the team. It kind of escalates versus how many, just very similar to um, the student handbook for the middle school and the high school where it can escalate based on, you mentioned hate speech or bullying or fighting, all these different levels of, did we catch you with a vape? Did we, you know, all these, um, so there's no set specific, but we work with Kim Jasper, Lindsay, Musada, James, Teresa, very easily and very well, um, for those situations where it's a combo, so to speak. Where it's not just school or not just athletics, especially when they're in season versus maybe out of season where we don't have, if I can expel you from the team, you're not even in season, it's not really a consequence, but there's still school consequence that can be upheld.
Great. Um, thank you so much. I appreciate it.
I, I wanted more highlight one thing and make sure that I think we're gonna be in agreement on this. Uh, I talked about the tremendous value that I think our student athletes get for, for their money. I believe we've done some benchmarking as well to see where we are with regards to our peers around us. Is that correct? I mean, so.
What kind of numbers we benchmark?
I mean, like on our pay to participate fees.
Yes.
Right? So I guess I wanted to give you a chance to like highlight that, because if I recall, we're pretty on average, if not a little below some other places.
I don't remember specifics, but we have talked to other SEC schools, um, and a couple in the SEC. Um, charge per sport. So Dexter, for example, two hundred and fifty dollars per sport. I do know that there is a family upper limit that they would set for that, cause if you have multiple kids in multiple sports, you're talking a lot, a lot of money. Um, some of the others, Northville and Novi, we often compare to. Northville does it annually, three hundred and eighty-five dollars. Novi is a hundred and seventy-five dollars per sport, per sport. Um, Ann Arbor Public Schools is two hundred and sixty-five dollars per year. So we're a little more expensive than that. Although we have learned as far as some of the things we're able to provide, that some of the Ann Arbor schools are not, such as game workers and things like that. Uh, we're, we're lucky in that regard. Um, the flip side, Chelsea does not have a pay to participate fee. Um, but in talking to their sports uh, administrators, uh, they struggle in terms of ticket takers, game workers, security and things like that. They rely on volunteers. And so you can imagine as parents, how many times you ask to do something. In our situation, now extrapolate that with a no fee, like Chelsea does.
Thank you for highlighting that. I just wanted you to go. I knew we had done that, so thank you.
There we go. Thank you so much. For those who didn't hear, Dr. Gold is showing her appreciation by not asking any questions. Well, I'd like to thank you all very, very much for your presentation this evening. I fired off one question via email and uh, see you next February. If not at a sporting event of some sort. Thank you so much. Dr. Latch is up next. On an under discussion, we want to talk about schools of choice.
Okay, yes.
Do it from the table here or, okay. Uh, it's fine.
Versus, go up there?
Okay, I'll go up there. I don't usually do that, but, okay. Uh, okay, so I put a new uh, handout for anybody who was, we, we talked a little bit about this policy, uh, some other matter. But uh, there's a new handout that discusses um, the openings available or the proposed openings in twenty-four, twenty-five. And so I just wanted to talk about philosophy with this. And, and that is that, um, that we would focus more on the earliest grade levels in terms of most of the students that we would take would come in at young fives in kindergarten with a few um, a first, second and third grade openings. And then not take students in school of choice in fourth, fifth, sixth, seventh and eighth grade. And then open it back up again in high school primarily for um, you know, schools like Emerson that there's, you know, not necessarily another option for students and they may be looking for a high school option. So. In other words, the focus would be more the early grade levels. Um, and then also open it up again for some students to come in at the high school level. So that's the general philosophy for next year. Um, and when you see it say minimum openings, that, this is a little bit confusing in that it basically means that at young fives, it says ten. So if there were fourteen students that applied, you would need to be, take the minimum of ten. Uh, that's more or less what that means. And anytime you see it say one minimum opening, it means that if you had fourteen students apply for that grade level, you would have to take one. Um, that, that's what that generally means. And so when you get to fourth, fifth, sixth, seventh and eighth, we would have to um, specify that minimum openings of zero means that we would not be taking students in grades four, five, six, seven and eight for the next school year. So that's just of that. I mean, well, that's, well, that's what we're proposing.
Yeah, so um, short, four months ago, we kind of had this conversation when we talked about five, what, policy five one one three and the strive for ten percent. From my understanding, what I see is um, we have thirty-five or thirty-six. Did you clarify that, Steve? That we're dropping off that are seniors right now that are gonna be falling out?
Yeah, there's, uh, I believe, uh, cause Miranda provided some good documentation, thirty-six that will be graduating.
That'd be graduating. So then we'll have a minimum of fifty with this policy. So, so our strive is going from like a five point or ten point five or ten point six to closer to eleven percent. Seems like that's going in the wrong direction.
Well, that would, that would be based on that percentage. Yeah, I, again, we're trying to state that we feel like we should be in that ten percent range. But I wanna try to focus on the youngest grade levels. If this board felt like we needed to move all these minimum openings and change those numbers. We could do that, but I'm recommending this to be the range that we take.
Sure. So um, I want to, I wanna reiterate my support for that. Okay? So we looked at this also as a, as a finance team. First of all, I want you to, I want you to know that I one hundred percent support Dr. Latch's philosophy about prioritizing our youngest learners. And the biggest reason why for me, that's a priority and reason why I find that to be wise, is because I believe in the quality of our staff. And so if we are obtaining students at four and five years old, those are individuals who are going through our programs with our staff members and our program, you know, like, and, and our targeted interventions and our MTSS model and those kinds of things. And I believe in that. And so I actually believe that there is um, tremendous value in that. Uh, the, you know, the, I asked Dr. Latch to, to tell us, when, when I thought about like this ten percent thing, and I like the idea of strive for ten percent. But I also want us to, if, there's only two ways that I can think of that we can really, really generate revenue. And they are per pupil allowance, which we have no saying whatsoever, right? And student count. And so if we wanna run high, high level programs and we wanna not have to make decisions about things like, for example, we had mentioned it, I think it's not, so please public, but like things like, we would have had to consider, you know, semesters instead of trimesters. Or, you know, maybe sometimes you have to like cut this program or that program. And I guess for me, when I look at our surroundings, I asked Dr. Latch about who has um, you know, this cap idea. The caps were things like Ann Arbor, like near twenty percent. Um, you know, Lincoln, am I, like, please, like, if you, you wanna speak to it, like you, you wrote me and I'm telling you that like, if we are at eleven percent, but it preserves our programs, it preserves the quality of what we're doing, then I support taking this many students.
Yeah, I did, I did ask other superintendents about caps. Ann Arbor said that they don't have an official camp, cap, but they strive, they try to stay below twenty percent. Chelsea does have a ten percent cap. Uh, Dexter's unlimited, Mylan's unlimited, Lincoln's unlimited. Um, those are the ones I looked at. Like they don't have a cap in those other districts, so.
So I guess what I would say is to back that up is I said, would say that I trust our superintendent and our plan. Our plan to reduce by attrition a million dollars from our budget, which will, will help to, to, to take our budget and, and, and level it out. And, but I, I think we need to take students too, in order to be able to support a hundred and fifteen member marching band. And some of those kinds of things. And, and we wanna have those robust, quality, huge, big programs, then I think this is, then I guess I'd rather see our superintendent take ten point seven than ten point two. Uh, anyway, that, that's my one trustee's thoughts.
Susan?
Um, so the policy uh, five one one three, um, that the board made a decision as a whole um, to support, um, you know, it, it's superintendent striving to enroll out of district students at approximately ten percent. Um, I think if we do get eleven percent, um, that's approximate to me. Um, so yeah, I think, you know, you're still looking at that number and talking to different districts and um, keeping that in mind. Um, so yeah, I, I think this looks good to me, from another trustee.
Thank you. Well, we're not voting on this this evening by any means, but I appreciate the information. Is there any other, any other questions you want to raise at this point? No? Okay. Uh, in the, we're moving on then. In the absence of uh, uh, policy committee chair Jennifer Miller being ill this evening, I have a, she, she's left me with some notes to share, so I'm gonna provide a very brief update of the last two meetings. Mike feels a little hot tonight, sir. Oh, good. All right. It's just me. It's, my ears are ringing. Um, on February twenty-first, we had a policy meeting to review the suggested Neola updates. And you'll see these in the consent agenda. Uh, these are related to laws that were changed regarding the Public Employment Relations Act, what we call PARA. Uh, Carol Diglio joined the committee meeting because these changes are connected to her role as the Director of Human Resources. Uh, we discussed changes to the five policies that would be in alignment to the changes to the law. And these are all strongly recommended by Neola. Uh, the first is board powers. And you'll see that uh, basically this relates to a number of topics that are no longer prohibited subjects. They've been deleted from this bylaw. Uh, and these changes took place on February thirteenth. Uh, and the next one is a policy, that was policy zero one two two. Policy fourteen twenty, school administrator evaluation. The major change there is, is that the statute, which goes into effect July first, basically changes the evaluation scales for educators and will move from four columns to three. So now especially, effectively will, we will have effective, developing and needs improvement. Policy thirty-one, and again, this is all by the law. Um, so anyway. Uh, policy thirty-one thirty-one, staff reductions and recalls. Uh, this policy relates to staff reductions, reductions and recalls, which are no longer a prohibited subject of bargaining. The legislature amended section twelve forty-eight relating to what can be used as a decision-making factor in staffing situations. Additionally, perspective changes to the rating system are going to affect July first. So the same rating for superintendents is this rating for uh, staff or teachers. Probationary teachers also, policy three one four two. Uh, there's a rating change for those people as well. And this policy basically reflects, reflects that. And finally, i- in the consent agenda, policy three two two zero, professional staff evaluations. Senate bills three ninety-five and three ninety-six were signed into law by Governor Whitmer. These bills changed the evaluation system, effective July first, twenty twenty-four. And uh, you'll see that in the red marks and the green marks. Most of the red marks are basically the slash outs of the uh, prior to July first and the rest are either reiterated in green or noted. So I'll leave that at that. And I would like to also talk about this evening's policy committee. We looked at four policies in particular. I'm gonna run through them really quickly because they are going to show up again. Uh, policy five one one three will be up for discussion in um, March twelfth, our next board meeting. Uh, this regards a slight change of language to our, the very policy we were talking about this evening, five one one three, schools of choice program. Um, basically, we are just becoming more aligned with the law as it exists. And it's remarkable how a single word can make a difference. And we'll have a great discussion about that next week. Uh, March twelfth, also, we will put two policies on the consent agenda. The uh, policy eighty-four hundred, uh, which is a school safety information, which is clarifies and tightens a number of pieces of language. And uh, designates the Director of Operations as a liaison to work with the School Safety Commission. Um, trying to see if there's anything else there. No, not major. Uh, in addition to something that's going on the consent agenda, and I would urge you all to read this, is the use of five, policy five five one two. Use of tobacco by students. This policy greatly, it's not just poli- tobacco, but also nicotine-related products. And there are so many of them. It just, it, with the changes in technology, the language now is far more precise in this uh, policy. And uh, basically it covers all, all manner of things that you can imagine ways students get nicotine into their bodies these days. Um, and there are also uh, policies that are reiterated on advertisement and promotion of uh, tobacco, nicotine, signage. Again, clarification of language is all the way through this, as well as enforcement. And finally, we will have for discussion next week, uh, the next board meeting, a policy eighty-three hundred, if you wanna take a peek at that at some point. It's the uh, continu- continuity of organizational operations plans. In case of a disaster, what happens, who takes over, what organizations, uh, and what staff members and administrators are, are, run the show in effect. And um, that in a nutshell is our, was our policy committee meeting, which, thank you very much Jennifer Stevan for her first policy committee in five years. Nice to have you on board. And uh, we got out at five thirty-five, which um, which was startling to me. We, so made me double check my watch to see. Uh, so we um, we have administrative board updates at this point. I'm gonna start with Dr. Latch, then go to the students. Oh, oh, pardon me. Oh, oh, I'm sorry, we haven't.
Questions. It's a discussion item, right?
This is a discussion about the policy committee, yes.
Yes. Um, so you mentioned a word change um, in the policy five one one three.
Yes.
Which is related to school of choice, correct?
It, it is the schools of choice policy.
Okay. Well, well.
Would you like me to go into detail about?
I guess, impact when we, cause this will come up on the next agenda. So will that have any sort of impact?
Probably not, but I'm happy to just speak for a minute about that word change, if that's okay. Um, the, in the, our policy has said that the superintendent is not, oh, sorry, that schools, that Celine is not available to any non-resident student who has been suspended within the preceding two years. Uh, practice has been that in some cases, uh, the superintendent has, with in great consultation with the parents and the students and seeing the situation, has allowed that student to come in. Um, we've noticed that that was a difference in our policy. When we actually looked at the law, it turns out that the superintendent, our superintendent has been doing it exactly correctly according to the law. It is, so the word is changed from is to may. Enrollment may not be available to any non-resident who has been suspended within the last two years. So. It's basically the policy change. And it, it just keeps us in line with what we've been doing anyway. Turns out we were doing it according to the law. Our policy was a little out of whack.
Awesome. Thanks.
That's it.
And can I ask if the other policy uh, committee members have anything to add?
I don't, but um, I appreciate Michael stepping in and being a good teammate when Jenny was out ill tonight. So thank you.
Super. Thank you. So administrative uh, or board updates, please? Uh, we start with Steve, then the students and then work away from Austin Gerby, Stephanie Stepagold.
Okay, yeah. So excited about inclusion week. We've had some great activities already. It was crazy sock day today. And then tomorrow, polar plunge, ten fifteen. Michael's getting ready to be freezing for a reason. And that is not fun. I've done it before. This, this should be good. Yeah, but I don't care how warm it is out. Okay, we, we shall see, but we're looking forward to it. Um, the other thing coming up, uh, this Thursday night I'm excited about, I'm going to Wharton Center with uh, Dave Meller. Because one of our students, Addie Nabek, won the state FFA for beef production and diversified livestock. So I'll be on the stage at Wharton to see her and her family accept that award. So that's exciting. And then also a few events coming up. I'm encouraging people to um, join me and, and my wife Laura at the Foundation for Celine Area Schools, Blue Jeans and Bling on March ninth. And then of course, get your tickets for Beauty and the Beast. Beauty and the Beast for March fifteenth to seventeenth. It's going to be a great show.
Based off what we talked about today, and having the Addie talk about athletics, I also wanted to talk about the student showcase that was supposed to happen tonight. So it was supposed to be the Washington United team. The girls hockey team reached out and was super excited to talk about their successes. Unfortunately, the coach was not happy with the progress on getting them letters and receiving recognition for that. So they're looking forward to coming back when they get more recognition and like the varsity letter process comes back up to discussion, so I'm excited to talk and advocate about that, so thank you.
Thank you.
And along with sports, hockey unfortunately came to an end, but we did win back-to-back-to-back SEC titles, which is one of the first time in a long time, I think, maybe one of the first. And along with Inclusion Week, yesterday, we had a unified student versus staff basketball game, and Dr. Latch was a ref, and it was a lot of fun, seemed like the entire school was into it, and the students beat the staff, as always, so it was perfect.
Of course, it was just by a very slim margin, right?
That's true, but we won, so that's all that matters. And with the polar plunge coming up, I'm excited to see everybody jump along with President McVeigh, and after, I have shirts for everyone on the board that wear tomorrow for the polar plunge.
Thursday, I went to an event Thursday night at the high school, the Fellowship of Christian Athletes had an event there. The leadership team put a lot of work together and brought in Donovan Edwards, the running back from the University of Michigan, and he kind of gave his story of life, and then his faith, and how that has helped him through adversity, and there's a lot of parents and a lot of kids there, and so I thought that was just a great event for, to hear Donovan's story, I mean, it was a really good story. And it was good for all the other kids to hear that too, and how, how his faith has helped him through adversities.
I just have one quick item, I've talked a lot tonight, but there is something that came across my radar that I wanted to highlight. And February twenty eighth tomorrow, in addition to, to polar plunge, I, I saw a potty training workshop that is being offered here for those with and without special needs of all ages. It's going to be in this Liberty Board Room. It's done by our SEAC team, so there's a number of people who are experts in that area, and so I would want to just promote and highlight that. Again, tomorrow, that's happening here at nine thirty in this board room.
Thank you.
Let's see, Steve mentioned Blue Jeans and Bling, so I'll just mention that as well. There's still time to buy tickets if you'd like. As Jenny mentioned last time, you can also participate in the auction if you are so able and interested, and I look forward to seeing Lauren's Bling, and Steve's Bling, and Laura Latch's Bling on the ninth, so we'll see you there. At the high school, I know our students are ending try two and getting ready for finals, so best of luck to the two of you and to all of our high school students. And also, we are going through scheduling right now at the high school, and seeing our Hornet Nation folks, our video production team, it just really reminded me about the breadth of choices that we have at the high school, and how you really can't, you know, help but be grateful for those excellent choices that our high school students are given, a lot of opportunity to find a lot of passions that they might pursue in life, so love that. Friday starts March's Reading Month, so, you know, this is a wonderful opportunity, depending on the age of your children, to read to your children or to involve them in a lifelong love of reading. I know there's a couple of teachers on here that probably would mention that as well. And then personally, the HR report was part of our packet, and I just wanted to personally thank and wish Joe Welton the very best of luck in any endeavor he, he may have in his life. Once a Hornet, always a Hornet, Joe, but he was one of the very first staff members that my family met when we started in Celineary Schools, and provided an excellent foundation, and to this day remembers the kids that he started with when he was a gym teacher at Pleasant Ridge, and is just very, very involved in student life, so I wanted to thank him from the bottom of my heart.
Okay. So, tonight was the Sex Ed Advisory Board Meeting at five thirty. Unfortunately, I wasn't able to make it, and the other co-chair wasn't. I know that it's a board committee, so hopefully we'll communicate about different timeframes, but hopefully we can provide an update soon when talking to the chair. The DEI Advisory Committee Meeting is this Thursday. Let me think. I had something else. Wednesday, tomorrow, okay, thank you. So, yes, that is tomorrow. Thanks, Kara, for mentioning that. And then, oh, what was I going to say? Oh, I was happy I reached out to each of my younger teachers, sorry, my younger children's teachers, and asked the question about what they were doing for Black History Month, and, which I knew some of the answers, because my multiracial daughter came home and was, you know, she was like, "Oh, that's all we talk about." So I was like, "Okay, great." So she's like, "Oh, we've talked about so many, and there's posters, and, you know, all of these, you know, black people in, in history," and, and so that was pretty exciting. And then even my, my youngest and young fives had said, and she's black, she had said, they, they were talking about, like, postal worker, and, you know, just within what they were already within that lesson, and, you know, she was like, "Oh, yeah, Philip." So, you know, like, so, so that was really great to hear back from them, that they are, you know, incorporating lessons now, celebrating and recognizing, and also, you know, incorporating it throughout the year. So, I was very pleased with that, that response, and, you know, I know sometimes when I volunteer in the classrooms, I do see, you know, people who, children who look like them in pictures, and, you know, Woodland Meadows does a wonderful job of putting up displays and things like that for particular months for celebrating, and so I appreciate that. One last thing, I did want to, I guess, mention, bring awareness to the student from Oklahoma, Nex Benedict, who was a transgender student who was bullied and harmed, well, was attacked in a restroom, and passed away the next day. And I know there's some unknown, you know, things related to that death, but, you know, one thing was that bullying had occurred consistently and wasn't handled for them being transgender, non-binary. And so, the school didn't handle it in, even the incident, in, in a good way at all. So I just wanted to, to remind our students that we do have policies, and so one of those is five five one seven point zero two, which is transgender and non-binary students. And then there's the anti-harassment, five five one seven, discrimination based on sex includes gender identity as well. So, so, you know, make sure that you know that you have protections under that. And then also, five five one seven point zero one, which is bullying and other aggressive behavior towards students. And so I just want to know that, that there are those resources. I know, you know, there's the Trevor Hotline for, you know, talking about these issues, somebody to talk to, and, you know, I know it's a really difficult time for those in the LGBTQ community, and I just wanted to, to recognize that and say that I, I support our students, and hopefully things are addressed, and do not continue through, to, to make sure that there's a safe and supportive environment for all of our students.
Thank you.
When we were listening to Assistant Superintendent Osley's budget, I just wanted to take a minute to thank the taxpayers, Governor Whitmer, the state legislatures for increasing the per pupil allowance on a day of an election. I think it's just important to note that elections matter, and, you know, that was a really great investment in our students throughout the state, and I'm looking forward to some of the investments in pre-K that are coming, and I'm grateful that we have lunches for our kids, and, so, that's excellent, and I'd like to thank our civics and government teachers who are out there teaching our students to be good citizens, and hopefully we maybe had some eighteen-year-olds eligible this year who went and exercised their right to vote today. And then I have not been to as many events as I would like to go to, but I'm hoping for more this spring, but I did want to highlight that almost every week I get some sort of message, both as a parent and as a board member, about our emergency response teams handling student events, and I would just like to thank those people. I know some of them, I don't know all of them, but I, I know that some of those incidences turn out to be not a big deal, and others have turned out to be a very big deal, and being the person who gets that call is not easy, and I know that they're handling it with professionalism and grace and compassion, and I'm just, every time I get one of those, I realize that behind that sort of boilerplate message, there was a terrified parent and a scared student and a health emergency, and so I just like to publicly thank those teams and our school nursing staff for doing those trainings and keeping us up to date. So I want to mention that.
Awesome, thank you. I'll just do the anchor leg here. I appreciate that, Lauren. I'm furthering my explorations in artificial intelligence by taking a course this week, which is run through General Motors. I'm going to be a SEMLA Quiz Bowl reader on March ninth, and you all are welcome to. Your kids are in that one? No, all right. And regarding two separate tanks, one that doesn't have sharks, the polar plunge is tomorrow. I'm really looking forward to that. It's going to be brisk, but, you know, more like a spa. Brad, I appreciate the, the funding. He did say in his note, may I share, that he really hoped it would be extra polary tomorrow, but I'm not sure it's going to be that way. And finally, I'm, I'm very pleased and delighted to be a, a, a part of the Shark Tank for Mrs. Stuckey's class, her biological.
Stuckey.
Stuckey, I'm sorry, what did I say?
Biomedical.
Stuckey, Stuckey?
It's Stuckey.
It's Stuckey, thank you. Well, biomedical advancements or ideas, and I'm looking forward to being, being able to venture fund millions of dollars for some up-and-coming brilliant idea. Actually, last year's were pretty amazing, so if you get a chance to drop in at some point, please volunteer when it comes around again.
You'll be doing it with me, and my kiddo is in the class.
Oh, you're going to be there? I'm on, there's March fourth and March fifth, what's your date?
I told her I'd do either one.
Oh, okay, I have to do only March fifth. March fifth as well, all right, good, well, good, we'll see some of you there then, thank you. We're at the consent agenda part of the agenda. The consent agenda is listed in this agenda, will not be read aloud. The motion noted will allow for the authorization of all listed items without discussion unless a member of the board requests that anyone or all be considered individually. Do I have a, a motion to authorize the consent agenda as printed?
So moves, Stevan.
Stevan, any support?
Support, yes, Steph.
Thank you, Susan. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Great, thank you very much. Items on the next agenda, Mr. Latch, Superintendent Latch?
Yes, we'll have a DEIAC report and a community education report, and then we're also going to do the first quarterly superintendent evaluation review in closed session.
Fantastic, thank you very much. The next board meeting will be held on Tuesday, March twelfth, at six thirty. We are, I'd like to entertain a motion to enter into closed session of the Board of Education Meeting at eight thirty six, well, actually, we'll be there at about, about eight, eight forty, with the intent of reopening at, how long will we take, Carol?
Half hour.
Half an hour, twenty minutes?
Half hour, twenty minutes.
Okay, we'll see you in nine-ish.
Nine.
Nine-ish, we'll see. For the purpose of collective bargaining, eight C of the Open Meetings Act. Under eight C, a simple majority vote is sufficient to enter into closed session. Do we have a motion, please?
So moves, Stevan.
Stevan? Is it, Tim? Thank you. Tim is seconding. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Thank you. Opposed? No opposed, so we will see you in closed session. We'll move out the people in the audience who shouldn't be here any longer. Thank you very much for staying, Zach. Students?
Thank you very much. We, without objection, I would like to adjourn the regular Board of Education meeting of February 27th, 2024 at 9:32. Thank you. Oh. Now it's official. Thank you, everyone. See you in a.